Okay, good evening, and I'll call the December fifteenth, 2021 East Line Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Those who can, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Art Carlson.
[Inaudible]
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. I heard what he said about, "Do you remember it?"
No, no, he said that.
Okay, I couldn't tell. Any additional agenda or consent calendar items? Delegation, anyone wish to address the Board of Selectmen? Mr. Christensen, please come up and state your name, address.
Thank you. Well, my name is Mark Christensen. I'm a member of the East Line Agribusiness Subcommittee. We're a Subcommittee of the Conservation of Natural Resources Commission. I wish to briefly let you know what the Agribusiness Subcommittee does, but first, I would like to thank you all for serving our town and congratulate those of you who won the election. Your efforts to serve the town are most appreciated and we congratulate you on your recent victory. As for the Agribusiness Subcommittee, we seek to promote and preserve agriculture in East Line as well as educate the public and town officials about the need and value of keeping agriculture flourishing in East Line. Open space and agricultural uses of land help to protect the watershed, which feeds the aquifers, from which we get our drinking water. Open space and agriculture also help stabilize the tax base, as there are less town services required on land that is in agriculture versus land that has been subvented. It is therefore important that the town do all that is possible to help keep agricultural enterprises flourishing. Some of the efforts the Agribusiness Subcommittee has been involved with regarding zoning include approval of new regulations for keeping poultry, becoming one of the first towns to officially allow beekeeping, was always done, but always illegally, and avoiding humorous directional signage laws. Additionally, we have been a popular presence at the Celebrate East Line Day each year, and we have held many open farm days in which we highlight various farms. We have held numerous and well-attended educational seminars at the library, and one of our more recent efforts was to form the much-needed East Line Given Garden, which provides fresh vegetables to those in need, and it is now a standalone 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. It also has attracted many youngsters and oldsters who volunteer their time and efforts in that garden. It is a great example of sustainable agriculture, community members working together, and it protects four acres over the aquifer. Finally, I would like to invite you all to our annual Potluck Party for Preservationists, which will be held January eighth, 6:30 p.m. The snow date is January fifteenth, 6:30 p.m., at the Niantic Community Church, right here in town. Various organizations in town will highlight their efforts over the last year and describe their plans for the upcoming year. It's a great way to keep abreast of what's going on with the many groups in town. This year, it will be dessert and coffee only, not so much potluck dinner. We hope to see you in January so that you can find out more about our agribusiness group as well as the many other preservationist groups in East Line. We thank you for your time and your dedication to East Line. Sincerely, members of the East Line Agribusiness Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Christensen. Anyone else wish to address the board? Mr. Steele?
Do we have sound?
Yeah, it's on there.
Rich Steele, 23 Rose Lane, East Line, Connecticut. I'd like to echo Mark's congratulations to you all for serving on the board and look forward to the administration of our town government. What I'd like to discuss tonight are two things. The first is the recent approval of the Viking Firearms Training Facility at the Old Bob's. That was recently approved by the Zoning Commission with just one descending vote. I understand that by zoning ordinances, it really needed to be approved. However, I would like you all to keep in mind some things that could be pertinent to the operation of this facility. One, I would like to make a suggestion that minors under eighteen years of age be limited to training just with the long guns, so that if they wanted to go out hunting with their families, that would be fine. I don't know that we necessarily need to have minors being trained with pistols or, worst-case scenario, with automatic weapons. The second point is that at the entrance to the facility, that there would be somebody that's monitoring people coming in, and if they were to be carrying a live weapon, that that would be put in a lockbox. If this would be like most places, that hire part-time employees for positions like that, and oftentimes minors, sixteen years of age, I'm not sure that they would necessarily be able to have the administration capability of deciding who can go in, who cannot, mental health, stability, et cetera. My thought, and this may be kind of far-fetched, but just something to consider, is that at construction sites or roadwork sites, we often have our town police hired by the contractors, and that money goes into the town coffers. Since it sounds like police training may occur at this facility, perhaps an off-duty police officer could be at that front desk to help administer things in a safer fashion. And the last comment about this facility is, there was a thought brought up by Mr. Dwyer about people perhaps having weapons in their trunks and their trunks in the parking lot and either showing off or sharing or possibly even selling, which I don't know that that would ever occur in a public place like that. But with our recent, or soon-to-be completion of our Public Safety Building, or the building as we like to refer to it now, my discussions with Chief Finkelstein is that it's capable of having video feeds from a lot of different areas of town come into that organization and the IT network there. Perhaps rather than just signage out in the parking lot to avoid loitering, which I don't think was the intent of what Mr. Dwyer was bringing up, perhaps there could be some security cameras mounted there and video feeds into the police station so that we could have better track of going-ons in that parking lot. That would especially be helpful in that we were told that we can expect to have clientele from as far as a hundred miles away. Okay. So with that said and done, I appreciate that safety is very important. I appreciate the training, but just, I think it needs to be appropriate age-related training, and that's all that I have to say about that. The second point that I'd like to touch on is what was in the paper today about a proposed truck stop, gas station, where the former Blue's was. To me, the merging of 395, the amount of traffic that we get at that area, I don't know that it's the wisest decision to go ahead with that kind of development. I know it was approved by zoning and by planning, but it just seems to be a great safety risk for our town and for travelers, not just East Line residents, but anybody that uses I-95 to go along that route. The other concern is the Niantic River watershed, that with the septic system and the gas tanks that would be there, we could have a potential disaster on our hands. And it's a wonderful, pristine watershed that we've had, and I'd like to see it preserved. I know that the transactions have already gone through, it's got the approvals, but just if there's something that could be done to address this. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Thank you, Rich. Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move for the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting on December 1st, 2021. And one of the things I asked Tom Hennick when we had our FOI yesterday was that if anyone, for instance, Ann, I know you attended those, and Ann, I don't know if you and Bill watched them at home or anything.
Yes.
But if you did, and you feel that the minutes are a good representation, you do not have to abstain, you're able to vote on the minutes, so there's no problem with that. So is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, there's a, we'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 1st, 2021, as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan. Any comments on the minutes?
I'd just like to say that I did review the tape, and I did review the minutes against the tape, so.
Okay, thank you.
I actually had one correction. I think on page three, I think the word "reserved" was used in the mean, and it should be reversed.
Whereabouts on page?
So we're on page three, about three-quarters the way down, where Mr. Nickerson inquired if the board's decision could be reserved.
Okay.
And I think you mean reversed.
Reverse, yeah.
And I think, yeah, I think that happened once before, yeah.
I believe that was corrected.
I was, yeah, I thought I remember hearing that at the meeting. Yeah, exactly.
At the meeting, yeah.
Okay.
So I marked it too.
Okay. So your vote, since you made it, Dan, you're okay with the correction?
Yes.
Okay, and obviously, since you made the correction, most of you are okay to substitute. If there are none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Moving on, with the brand-new tax collector and just one other, you know, one person short in there, they do not have a consented calendar for this evening, so we'll move on to old business, which would be the fishing dock leases. We have, we had four fishing docks down at Cheney Park, and they were all rented. We lost one when the state did the renovation work and the repair work on the Niantic River Bridge. We're not sure if we're getting the fourth one back. We've been told we might be allowed to use it to let a boat come in and unload, load, but whether we'll get it back to rent, we're not sure. One of the slips has been rented to Blackhawk, which it has been for years. That one was voted on at our last meeting, and that's in place until 2024, the end of, or I think, yeah, two years, 2022 to 2024. And Dan worked on the Subcommittee that used to negotiate these every year, as was Paul Dagel and Mark Salerno. With the two of them gone, I talked to town council yesterday, and the people are, you know, it was just for one year, so the two people that have it, Joe Lizza of 41 Jeremy Drive and Mike Stebsky, who has been doing this for years out of Montville, have been waiting to hear whether or not they're renewed. So my recommendation, and Dan, you can please jump in on this too, is to extend these for another year. So, and then we can have Dan with a couple other people form a new committee, and then come back with a recommendation in December of this year, and then possibly do at least two years, so that every time a new board comes in, they don't get hit with the boat leases, they're all taken care of. So, Dan, would you like to talk to this, since you were always involved in negotiations?
Yeah, so the last time the committee met and before these leases were entered into, we spent quite a bit of time vetting the current leaseholders, and so I think it's a reasonable idea to extend the current leaseholders for another year, and so we have an opportunity to form a new committee and then review what our criteria ought to be moving forward. So I would support your position of extending the current leases.
And we'll ask that later on in the meeting, we'll ask for a couple volunteers to join, Dan, on that committee now that we need a couple people. As you can see on the exhibits that you've seen in your package too, it shows the X where that smaller one we've lost right now. We are trying to at least get it back for some storage and so forth like that, but, you know, that number one has the X in it because it's just too small and the state won't allow us, because if there was a fire at that dock, the bridge is right above it, so they have some concerns there.
And all three of these people are actively fishing?
Yeah, Blackhawk obviously is a commercial, you know, charter. Mr. Lizza is a, that's what he is, he's a professional fisherman, and so is Mr. Stebsky. They both use this for their businesses, Mr. Lizza as well as a town resident. So, is there no other comments? A motion?
Yeah, so are we moving first to create that Subcommittee, and then secondarily to approve?
No, let's, let's, let's.
I think we need to.
Yeah, let's, okay. Is there a couple people that would like to volunteer to work with Dan on this?
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Okay. Bill Weber?
Somebody else?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Ann? Okay, Ann Chacello, so appoint Dan Cunningham, Ann Chacello, and Bill Weber.
Okay, so Dan, and I'm just gonna do this, and it's Bill.
And this gives you time, Dan, you to meet with them, you know, go through the history of it, and there's been talk about opening it up to, you know, the highest bidder type thing and so forth like that, so this just basically, and gives us time to do that.
All right, so I'll move to create a fishing lease Subcommittee to appoint Dan Cunningham, Bill Weber, and Ann Chacello to serve on said committee.
And then?
And then, oh, we're doing the second, I think we need to do two separate motions, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Second.
Oh, we have to second.
Oh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Dan's second. Thank you for catching that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, and then the next one.
And the next motion is move to extend the current fishing dock leases for Michael Stebsky and Joe Lizza until December 31st, 2022, with a rent increase of five percent above the 2021 rent amount, to give the newly formed fishing lease Subcommittee an opportunity to acquaint themselves with the situation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ann Chacello. Any comments?
Yeah, I, when I reviewed this, there was some administrative things that I was gonna discuss, but I understand you don't want to do that now. The only real.
With the leases and so forth?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be, okay.
I got that.
But if you have a question, go ahead.
But the one question I do have is, under insurance, it doesn't talk about oil or chemical spills, or at least not by my reading of it. So that was my only real concern, is should we have something in the insurance clause that discussed oil and chemical spills?
Which one is the insurance clause?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve. I'm sure that that would just naturally be part of what would happen there, because that would be what you probably would expect.
It's just everything else is laid out in that section, and again, I'll defer to, you know, our legal experts, but.
Yeah, again, you know, town attorney has, this is the same one that the Blackhawk has signed, except obviously it's for them and so forth like that, so. But that might be something as we move forward for, since you're on the committee, that'd be great to move forward.
We'll discuss.
Okay. Thank you.
My only question, I have two questions. One was just more of a comment that I guess we'll need to put the appropriate dates in, there's several places where, I think, because it's the existing lease, and when the leases were written, they didn't update the, you know, the term, you know, to be ending in '22.
These are last year's leases.
These are last year's leases.
Right, I realize that. Okay, so just, we'll have, we'll have the current dates.
Yeah.
And then just a general question I had is, so these are actually very detailed leases, so that's great. I was impressed. But I just had a question as to who, is it Parks and Recreation that will basically administer the leases? I mean.
No, we administer those.
Okay.
We administer those. The only, you know, thing that's helped them, yeah, the thing they really get from us is, they do get a little bit of, we'll use a little water when we have it hooked up down there in the air for the Blackhawk and so forth like that, but outside of that, they're pretty much on their own, and they're supposed to not, you know, they're allowed to have people park there, especially for the Blackhawk, because, you know, they're a charter.
And has that parking situation changed at all?
No, actually, it has not been a problem.
Okay, that's good.
Seems to be working out.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Are there any other comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Then carried unanimously.
That was for both leases, not one for each?
Correct.
Yeah, it was for both, okay.
Yes, the motion was for both.
The next item which was added is because we found out that this needs to be done by December 15th, and Julie let us know last week, and I was at a Cogni, Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments this morning, and I talked to the executive director, and he said, "Oh," I said, "We're doing it tonight." He said, "Okay, anytime over the next few days is fine, but we need to do that." As you can see, this is an Emergency Management Performance Grant, and basically it just, to grant, the chief executive author just sign the Emergency Management Performance Grant application package on behalf of the municipality, that's all it's done. So.
Yeah, okay. FY21 Emergency Management Performance Grant resolved that the Board of Selectmen may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate for the resolve that Kevin A. Siri, as First Selectman of the Town of East Line, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. The undersigned further certifies that Kevin A. Siri now holds the office of First Selectman, and that he has held that office since December 7th, 2021.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And that carried unanimously. Moving on, is the appointment of the Deputy First Selectman, in accordance with Section 334, the Charter of the Board of Selectmen, at its first meeting after the board takes office, shall designate a member of the board as the Deputy First Selectman who shall, upon the absence or disability of the First Selectman, act as First Selectman. So is there a motion? I'll let, Dan, I'll let you do the first motion. I'll let you, and then, hold on, he's got a copy of the law.
I move to appoint Ann Centaro, 11 Rose Lane, East Line, to serve as Deputy First Selectman with a term to expire on December 4th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Are there any other motions to make an appointment? Are there any other motions? Are there any motions? Okay, I'll call for the vote, then. All those in favor of Ann as the Deputy First Selectman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, Ann.
Thank you.
I've got lots of things for you to say.
Good to know.
And moving on to, and we've come to appoint a Deputy First Selectman, because over the last seven years I was Mark's, there was a two-day period where we thought Mark Salerno was gonna throw up a barrier around the town not to let us back in because we were both out. So the need is there just to sign the check registers on Thursday or Friday, and, you know, really only event if something urgent came up. So is there a motion to appoint a deputy, second deputy First Selectman?
Yes, I'll move to appoint Dan Cunningham, 161 Main Street, Niantic, to serve as the second deputy First Selectman, with a term to expire on December 4th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rose Ann. Any other nominations for that position? Any other nomination? Any other nominations? We'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
And now, most of us have seen the Hathaway Farms LLC presentation where they've asked us to consider the purchase, you know, offering it with, working with the Land Trust to purchase 120 acres up there. They're at a point now where they have a grant for $400,000 where the state, and we've got a little copy of the letter right here, and I met with a few of them last week. I met with Art, Paul Garrity, the attorney, and Ron, and then I also talked with Steve Harney yesterday, who's the owner of Hathaway, or basically represents Hathaway Farms LLC, and they need some type of, we know, they know that we can't commit funding tonight, but at least have a discussion that we are interested in moving forward to enter into negotiations to, you know, consider the possible purchase of it. So I've asked them to come to give us just a brief presentation in case anyone hasn't seen it, and then we can have our own discussion about moving forward. So, I don't know, Ron, you're gonna, just give your name and address, Ron, please.
Ron Gouich, 13 East Line, East Line, Connecticut. I'm president of the East Line Man Trust, and we thank you for the opportunity to give a short presentation to catch up with the current events that are happening. The East Line Man Trust was founded in 1972. In fact, Art Carson was one of the founders of the Man Trust. So he's been very active in conservation over these years. We are here to formally request financial assistance from the Town of East Line that is necessary to preserve the Hathaway property and open space forever. By the way, as a background, we've been working with the owners of the Hathaway property for the past five years, counseling them as to meet their requirements and their desire to preserve the land. It's only recently where we've become very active in acquiring the property. In the past six months, we have engaged with former First Selectman Mark Nickerson, and recently with, as mentioned, Mr. Siri, the East Line Planning Committee, them and the Water Agency, Parks and Lake Commission, and Conservation Natural Resources Commission about the need to preserve this land. In addition, we have had meetings with various organizations, and we have now layers of support from the Niantic Supporters' Club, Padacansett Lake Association, the Niantic River Watershed Committee, and the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District Incorporated to support the movement forward of acquiring this property. The property itself has 3,000 feet of waterfront on the Padacansett Lake. We have received, as I mentioned, numerous supports of various agencies towards the purchase of this with inspection. On September 3rd, we had a community meeting inviting town residents for our presentation as to what's happening at the Hathaway property. People were very concerned about what's gonna happen. We have more than a hundred town residents attend, and during the end of the meeting, we ended up with one individual standing up and saying, "Is there any reason why we should not vote for this or support this?" And the answer was no response. We do have one person in the audience, we're not sure what his response was, but we care. At this point, we have a contract to purchase the 120-acre property for $1,650,000 from the property owner, Hathaway Farm LLC. We've moved ahead on this to secure the land, to prevent other man agents from obtaining and visiting under property. We have one company who was talking about playing a hundred homes in that property, and we're very much against that, that many people are. In acquiring the grant money from the state, we are required to provide what's called two Yellow Book Appraisals. The Yellow Book refers actually to the color of the document, and the appraisals are federal government guidelines on how to, and what elements to identify in an appraisal. It's based on this appraisal where we derive the value of the property at current market The seller has been extremely cooperative with us and has extended the closing date on several occasions despite there is no obligation on their part to do that. They are to full support of our plans. In addition, we have mentioned we have a $400,000 grant that was awarded to us by the state towards the purchase of this property. A copy of that grant award letter is in the packet that we've passed out. We have also confirmed with DEEP that we can transfer those funds to the We have also confirmed with DEEP that we can transfer those funds to the town should the town decide to move forward with the opportunity to purchase the property. At the moment, we have now active surveyors, the JP Marion Company is currently in the process of completing an 8-2 survey. These surveys are costing us a lot to bring you up to date as to today's evaluation of the value of the property. We also are working with the ELM Realty Advisors from Parkburg, whom has recommended to us by DEEP, this appraisal is a requirement for our bridge financing lender. As I believe our attorney has advised Mr. Siri, we need to close the purchase of this property shortly. We understand the town has a process they need to abide by that is going to take a little time, which will require us to close prior to the town's financial involvement being finalized. So we're taking the correct steps of protecting the property and the correct steps for assuring that all the procedures of the committee are followed in detail and then very open as to what we are doing. And that's the summary. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Steve Harney.
Let me see if any, does anyone have any questions for Ron before we move on? Ann.
I just want a clarification. You said you need to close the property shortly? And do you have a timeframe?
We have a, we have the, we have a temporary loan from an organization that supports the Land Trust, and that loan is covering the cost of us securing that land. And then from that point, our focus is to secure the land so it's protected from other people. So now we're in the process now of raising all the financials that's needed to pay off that loan while also to acquire the property.
So are you saying that you're going to acquire the property first and then come back to East Lime to be like reimbursed, basically?
Because of the timing, we have to acquire it first. It's a timing issue. It's our intent, and this is our discussions that we have been having, is that we want to work with the town with an effort for the town to take over buying the property. We can transfer that $400,000 from the state into the money that's going to be required to pay the landowners and pay off our debtors and indebtednesses. So I've learned there's a lot of those details that we're making sure we're covering them correctly because this is such an important project to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's not, Mr. Harney.
For the record, my name is Steve Harney. I used to be a resident in East Lime and sat occasionally behind that table you did for the way of finance. I currently live in North Carolina, but I'm up here on business on several matters. So I just thought I'd come and see if any of you had any other questions about the project because I'm a big representative of Hathaway Farms LLC and happy to answer any questions you may have. As Kevin said, we met yesterday, so.
And I did, and Steve knows the process too. He knows we'd have to identify a funding, our funding source, and we'd have to go through a process because I also discussed this with town attorney during my meeting with them yesterday, the pre-meeting with the attorneys, and you know, they said we'd have to, you know, get an, obviously, our own appraisal, our own title search, the specific terms of the purchase and so forth like that. So they would obviously be involved with us quite a bit with that. So, you know, and, you know, obviously, and then we'd probably, obviously, have to go to public hearings, and then obviously, this, something of this nature would wind up having to go to a referendum. So that, you know, it wouldn't happen in the next 30 days, and I think Steve knows that. And we've reached out to DEEP, and what they want to see is a commitment that we are moving forward with this project, or at least in an attempt to pursue the project.
No, that's fine. I've always, you all know that it's been on the plan of conservation and development for probably going on 20 years now.
It's the number one.
So again, we purchased it, there's been other developers interested in it, but as I even said to them, you know, I was going to present it to the town to see what they wanted to do, just for all those reasons, protecting some other properties in the midst of doing a few other ones right now. So that's fine, I understand the process you have to go through. Somewhere you're going to authorize or think you.
Yeah, we have a motion tonight that we've got, we've gone through town attorney on regarding that.
You know, I just happened to be in town, so I thought I'd open it up to any questions you want to the owner, representative of the ownership entity in addition to the Land Trust.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Harney? No. Okay, thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Art would now make this short presentation on the similar of the questions.
Mr. Carlson, your name and address, please, sir? I believe it's 12 Dean Road, correct?
I think it's Art Carlson, 30 Dean Road.
I thought it was 12, I'm sorry. I thought it was 30, 12, I mean, so.
What I'm going to do is I give you a once-over lightly on where the thing is, what it's like, why it's important, and, can you see that?
Why don't you slide that?
You'll be able to follow.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I got copies here, I can't see that real well, but I got copies here. We have copies.
The problem is I gotta make sure I see what's up there. What this picture shows us is where the thing is located. We bump up against a Yale property. We have, it's actually 3,000 feet including Lake of the Padgett River. Okay, in fact, it's a little aside, we got a call from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and here was the question, how many feet do you have on waterflood? Okay, because they were going to contribute to that. Not many pieces, you don't buy 3,000 feet of waterflood. This shows where it is. Put the next one up, Ron. What we wanted with Sabrestone right away is why this is important from a waterflood point of view. And that's what's driving this whole thing. The light, the dark green represents the Padgett River waterfin, okay? That's where we have well number five, which, when it's working, it doesn't have the sand in it, it gets about well more than a half a million gallons a day out of it, right? Well number five is fed by all the water that's in the land upstream of it. That's the Hathaway property. That's the Yale, that's Powers Lake. That's a couple of other properties that the Land Trust owns. That's why that's such a key and important piece. It also sits over, a half of, the Hathaway property is over the African that feeds that entire area, okay? Also, it's, well, number five has only half the sodium that all the other wells have, which is a really important thing for us. And it does it because it's a more rural area, so it's got nothing but virtues. Show the next one. This is the actual parcel. This represents about 250 acres, 120 of the Hathaway.
Ron, you got it sideways.
No, you got to turn it sideways. Well, at least you had the color side, though. That was one mistake we didn't make. You can see it's bracketed with Yale on both ends, which is pretty secure. And the Land Trust also has an easement on the 36 acres. So that whole parcel now is wonderfully protected, and that really is a big deal. Show them the next one. And this, we don't have a picture of this next one, it simply identifies where the land is relative to the high school and planters school. It's in pretty much walking distance, and it says something about the forest that's there. Walking this forest with, looking at our parks with our foresters, we concluded, I can say, boy, that's a lot of big oak trees in here. Yes, they're well over 100 years old. How did that happen? Well, it missed the 38 hurricane. They were all small and long, hence we have really a wonderful forest here where the woods grow and go into the whole thing from an education point of view. That's, that's another thing that's driving us. Show the next picture. Very quickly, through the process that we use, actually Conservation Commission developed this process, of how do we evaluate property, land? What makes it, what makes it valuable to the town? And if you look at your chart, this procedure we've, was developed over, replied over what five years. What it self-explanatory, but the driver was the single most important thing from our point of view, which is the drinking water. Air and water, those are the two things that keep society going. Then you give jobs and police and fire trucks. But air and water, that's the big deal. And we've got all the tech in this town of water, and that's what we're doing. But we wanted to show you that there's a lot more to this than just keeping the water clean. It was important to put in that the public has access to this land. Boy, our public doesn't have much access to waterflood. It's just so limited. Okay, now, that's where the 3,000 feet comes in. That's a wonderful, that's a wonderful thing. There's actually 10 acre park, beautiful piece of farmland on that property, which is interesting. I was talking with a guy who's in charge of trying to regrow the American chestnut trees, right? He'd be thrilled to set up an acre nursery with chestnuts in it, let it grow and see if, you know, in time, we could bring that thing back, there's another usage for the thing. And tie that in with education, see, it just, and then fishing. Act it in passive recreation, that's obvious, there's forest blocks and greenways. Well, we used to call open space, all that eight acre plot, parcels in a development, okay? Connected to nothing. All it did was have the, the guy who lived next to the eight acre had one or a piece of an acre. We tied all the thing together. You gotta have 100 acres, it's one under the hook of one. Well, number six is one probably I am personally most pleased with, a unique geological features that I finally say, why do we want to do that? And you know what? Sheer beauty. What's wrong with sheer beauty? Nothing. Culturally and historically, that's how the Samuel Smith house got identified, okay? And finally, biodiversity. First time I presented this, I really got a land base, and by somebody said, don't you know that biodiversity should be at the top of the list? And that's true in some senses, and my answer was, don't you know that we have to raise a million dollars? I can't raise it by talking about biodiversity. But if ELO Wilson from Harvard will tell you that the essence of biodiversity is you have to have the land first, okay? Then you get the biodiversity. You don't get biodiversity and look for land, okay? Those eight attributes ended up with a chart we signed about 12 years ago with my commission. We got into the POCB, it's now in the way of town goes business, which is what I would say. And that's the last we have, but you also have this last picture, which just shows some more detail on rural, rural power, those places, what about where the doors come down and so on. That's just a little.
Any questions for Mr. Carlson? Thank you, Art, as always. Okay, as I mentioned, I talked with, you know, we discussed this with the town attorney. I discussed with the town attorneys yesterday, and they told us, you know, what we need to be moving forward. They saw what the agenda item was, and they said that would be perfectly okay to move forward. Just, you know, here again, with terms, you know, I, here again, I, they know we can't move within a month, but I think it's something we need to move on over the next few months. And I got to call into DEEP, but I have not gotten a response yet. You know, just since we have, we have to identify funding, just as an open thought right now, we have $205,000 in our open space fund right now. I talked to Holly Cheeseman, she said there have been other towns that have used some money from the American Rescue Plan monies for open space, and obviously, we could do some bonding, and if we had them turn over the money to us for the $400,000 grant, because then the title would be held by the town. So, so we could come back, you know, we could easily identify some sources of funding and then decide as board whether we want to move it on to the town for consideration after I've met and negotiated with the representatives from Hathaway Farms. So if there's no question, try and move a motion.
Sure. Move to authorize the First Selectman to enter into discussions with representatives of Hathaway Farms LLC regarding the possible purchase of the property.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ann Chachala seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carry unanimously. So we'll be in touch. I'll talk to town attorney, and we'll be in touch with everybody. Thank you. And if you all'd like to leave, you don't have to. For you guys, the fun part of the meeting's over. Okay, sure. Thank you, Steve. Yep. Ron, I still have your copy that I'll hold on to in case anybody wants to look through it, too. There's a lot of good detail in that, so if any other member of the board wants to look at that, yeah.
This is great. It just orients you well.
If the policy doesn't cover, spills.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we have to look into it.
There's a submission we need to, to get the grant from you.
Position is aware for the insurance companies, get out of it, they will.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Moving on, we, the next thing is ex officio appointments. We'll be doing this at the next two meetings. We have lots of reappointments and new, most of them tonight are all reappointments, correct, Sandy?
Yeah.
And Sandy spent a lot of time today working on this. I mean, it's one, so.
Kevin, are we on ex officio appointments?
Yes.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, yeah, ex officio. I skipped, I went one page, man. All right, we have a list of ex officio assignments, and Bill, it looks like unless you've, we've assigned you to two on the same day.
And you've got me and Ann both on the town building committee.
We did that with Paul and Mark as well, previous to have a backup on that one because they were meeting a lot, and especially, that's probably gonna, you know, ease up quite a bit.
But I was expecting that to slow down, though.
It's gonna slow down probably in another couple of months, because I don't know if any other major projects coming up, you know, possibly in the next couple of years, the roof at the community center, but that would be it. So we could, we need to, we need to, we want to leave you with two, obviously, but we have your historic properties. Is there anybody that would like to take, I know you, you've had historic properties for a while. Ann, would you be interested in historic properties? Ann Chachala?
Um.
I don't know if that would be a conflict for you?
Just with days, let me just see.
The first Tuesday of the month?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that looks good. And I, you know, I was thinking, leave Bill as the primary for building then, so then he has two regular ones, so.
Okay.
So you got that change? So you got that change? Okay, Sandy's got it, so. And years ago, we used to assign one person, and it was always, you know, a brand-new member of the board to Board of Ed for the entire year. That's really time, and it is, it's very time-consuming. So now we split it up to each of us take two months of the year. And, you know, and a lot of times, if you can't make it, you just ask someone to cover for you, and then you cover their month and stuff like that. And Sandy is really good at getting their, we get the board packet sent to us here. Sandy's really good at getting out the board, the packet to the ex officio for that meeting. So is there, so we've made an adjustment to that, or is there a motion to accept as amended?
Yeah. Move to approve the 2022-2023 ex officio list of assignments as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any other comments?
Just a question. So, Ann, are you staying on town building then?
Yeah, I'm sort of, I think Bill will be the primary person.
But you're both, okay.
Secondary. I think that was the way it was done.
Yeah, it was on the last board.
I think Paul was primary, and Mr. Salerno was the secondary.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
I would just add that oftentimes, an emergency occurs, or for some reason, one cannot attend the ex officio. It's always been practiced that other members of the board could be contacted to see if they would be available to substitute.
Definitely. Moving on now, it's the appointments to boards and commissioners. This is to get, we had a minor problem last week. ZBA met, and they did not have a quorum, and the one person, the one alternate they had was out of town, so they didn't have enough people, so we'll be able to address that tonight as well, so. Ann, I'll let you and Dan alternate between assignments, so that you don't, you hold on to your breath there.
Okay.
And then we'll have to start signing the documents.
Right, right. Okay, so we will do these.
And as we sign them, we start passing them around, so that...
As we approve.
Yeah, so that everybody gets.
All right. The first of these is move to appoint Julie Wilson, 13 Park Place, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as the Emergency Management Deputy Director for the Town of East Lime with the term to expire on January 8, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. And just moving on.
Move to appoint Marge Cast for Winfall Lane, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the Commission on Aging with a term to expire January 5, 2026.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move to appoint John Werthner for Blueberry Lane, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the Commission on Aging with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Move to appoint Laura Ashburn, 31 West Main Street, Number 9, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint Donald Danila, 24 Patagonia Drive, East Lime, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint Mark Christensen of 66 Grassy Hill Road, East Lime, Connecticut, to serve as a member of the, on the Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
Next. Move to appoint Donald McKenzie, 10 Woodland Drive, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the East Lime Harbor Management Shellfish Commission with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint Craig Mason, 9 Acorn Drive, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the East Lime Harbor Management Shellfish Commission with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries unanimously.
That was Craig, right. Move to appoint Michael Finkelstein as a fire investigator for the Town of East Lime with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint Robert Digitano as deputy fire marshal for the Town of East Lime with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint Frank Ellsworth as deputy fire marshal for the Town of East Lime with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Move to appoint Richard Waterman, 11 Lake Avenue Extension, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as an alternate member of the Historic Properties Commission with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? I'm sure people are enjoying watching this at home.
Hopefully, it's taped, so I can watch it when I get home.
Yeah.
Move to appoint Stephen Marks Hamilton, 39 Sunnyside Drive, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member of the Historic Properties Commission with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint Gregory McIntyre, 41 Shore Road, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the Inland Wetlands Agency with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
Let's see, we have Christian. Move to appoint Kristen Kent-Chantrell, 13 Green Valley Lakes Road, East Lime, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the Inland Wetlands Agency with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Seconded.
Seconded.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint Eugene Cushman, 184 Upper Patagonia Road, East Lime, Connecticut, to serve as town moderator for the Town of East Lime with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint Donald Danila, 24 Patagonia Drive, East Lime, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the Niantic River Watershed Board with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint Ralph Bates of 5 Hudson Lane, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the Niantic River Watershed Board with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. And that is it for tonight. We'll have to do this again at our next meeting, so. And the interesting thing is, I've gotten a lot of inquiries of people wishing to get involved, young people, which is nice to see. Okay. Moving on, the next thing is to authorize the first selectman to sign the check registers, which is important for the people in town that like to get paid, so.
Yep, my good motion.
Yep.
Move that the Board of Selectmen delegates to the first selectman, Kevin Siri, and upon the absence or disability of the first selectman, to the deputy first selectman, Ann Santoro. The Board's obligation to sign the orders of the Board of Selectmen on the town treasury for payment of regularly budgeted expenses of the town, with exception of those of a capital nature over $50,000, where bids are required. And further, that the signed orders covering the period subsequent to the previous regular meeting of the Board be presented at each regular meeting of the Board for review. In the absence of the first selectman and his deputy, the first selectman may delegate the obligation to sign the orders of the Board of Selectmen to the second deputy first selectman for payment of the expenses of the town.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Ann. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, rules and regs. I know, as you can see, the last time this was approved was December 15 of 2021, and it was, it's, I mean, no, 2000, I think, 16 was the last time this was, we saw this approved. I'm looking at what's on this one today. I'm sorry, today is. And the one that was on file did not have number 12, which was sent in today. And I do, this predates almost all of us on the Board of Selectmen, not Roseanne, but it, Roseanne, this was back when Jack Hogan was on the Board, and he used to have to, his business required, his work required him to be in the Bahamas, and it runs really work. He was working on subs, so that wasn't a pleasure. So they had that in there. So this will, tonight, it's just for review. I thought what we'd do is have everybody take a look at these, make any corrections you'd like to see, or many, or, you know, any changes you might like to see to this, because Ann Santoro has mentioned a couple to me. I think, Dan, you mentioned some, and there's a couple I'd have, too, because...
Why don't we discuss those this evening?
Well, I mean, I think there's a...
And then vote on it at the next meeting if people had additional.
Well, I don't know that everybody's had a chance to make the ones. Well, we could do that, but I thought this would give people a chance to review it and think what they'd like to see changed. But let's go. Okay, the one change in this right now is, we've had a couple requests to move our meetings to 7:00. I'm very comfortable with that. How do other board members feel? Okay, I'm, Dan? Dan?
7:00 is fine.
Okay. Okay, so anything there? Any other changes anyone would like to see?
On the top of the second page, Rule 5. The agenda shall be mailed at least four days. Can we put in there or transmitted electronically? However, we would like to word it, but we're already doing that, so this would just make it official. And Rule 10. All meetings and public hearings shall be recorded on tape. Are we still using tape?
No. I think if we just, shall be recorded, shall be, I think we probably should say video recorded. I think the word recorded, say, implies both digit, I mean, video and audio.
Yeah, it was my comment, is the comment about recording on tape and the erasing afterwards. It seemed to me that just recording is sufficient, not remove. We don't erase the old ones, right?
No, because right now, they're all stored.
It's archived.
Yeah, archived.
So what are you suggesting, Bill?
I was suggesting getting rid of the word tape in both sentences, and just put recorded. Well, I guess the whole second sentence, 90 days after the tape shall be erased, I think that can be removed.
So how long do we, how long are we keeping?
There, well, you'll find out in FOIA. FOIA tells you how long you have to keep them. We probably do keep them longer, so.
And then...
But it's not as if it's a DVD or something like that. These are all cloud-type things and everything like that now, so.
So it also states a transcript of the recording, because normally, we don't, we don't do transcripts, but then I see that a transcript will be made upon vote of the majority of the Board.
To be accurate, I think the video and audio recording, the transcript is there. I mean, the only thing you'd have, yeah, I think that's, I think we could probably remove that sentence.
I think that refers to, in previous cases which we've had, which have resulted in a court case, we've had to go back to the record and actually have a transcript done.
Which kind of speaks to my question, is what do you do when the machine fails, right? We just had a meeting where the audio was lost. So there must be some way that we, in this Rule 10, somewhere it must address, what do you do if the tape fails, the taping fails?
Yeah, we don't, we don't use a separate recording device in this room.
No, correct. We don't. We do not, nor do we have one.
All right, well, we perhaps want to work on rewarding Rule 10 a little bit.
Actually, that might be a good thing to give to Mike Mines, our Carmen in IT. They're the ones that deal with all the, you know, the recording, and to let them have an input onto that.
And then, at the beginning, I'm...
Were you looking for glasses?
Is it ours?
I think you found it.
There's a pair of glasses on the floor.
Oh, really?
If that's what he's looking for. Three rows back, second chair.
Oh, wait till she...
Can't see a place, but I can see distance. So if we're done with Rule 10?
Yeah, I think we just need to work on rewarding, yep.
Okay, Rule 10.
Yeah, so that we have a clear wording of that for the next meeting. Now, at the beginning, Rule 1 says that we operate on recordings with Robert's Rules of Order, which for the most part, we do, but when you get to Rule 11, you notice that there's a deviation there, because under Robert's rules, the chair may not make or second motions. And I think just as rule of thumb, generally in the past, the first selectman has not made motions, but relied on the rest of the Board to make those.
Because technically, according to Robert's rules, if the chair wishes to make a motion, they have to vacate the chair for that moment to take the motion, so.
But Rule 1 says, except otherwise noted, and Rule 11 says, another note.
Right. I'm just calling to the new members' attention that generally, the first selectman tries to avoid doing that.
And I think we do, but like we adjourned the last meeting of Mark's tenure, he seconded the motion to adjourn, so, you know, still allows that, allows that exception.
Probably made the motion six times the night before.
Okay, and then over on the last page, number 7. Sufficient identification procedures shall be employed to ensure that the remember members, I think remember should just be out. I think remember should just be out.
Should say remote.
Remote.
Yeah, fix that, like, hold it.
I was wondering with the electronic way of conferencing, or electronic conferencing, we might want to relook at that too, because so much has changed in this. I mean, we now have everything. I, we're hopefully by April going to be able to hybrid this to that. That's going to change that, so I think that rule, rather than do anything right now, that needs rework, because, you know.
I think I'll have.
Because this one says at least three members shall be present at any regular electronic meeting. That, you know, physically present, and that obviously during COVID. COVID obviously was an exception regardless of what these rules said because of the governor's orders. But, you know, even now we can have Zoom meetings when necessary. So I think that one needs to be reworked a lot.
Hey, those were just my comments.
Okay.
Some things, you know, I'm used to giving homework.
Yes, you are. And Anne Santoro, you wanted, you want to talk about the differences? You want to kind of specify the difference between delegations and public comment?
Right, a little clarity there, when we want what, so to speak.
Yeah.
Because they're, you know, two different delegations usually.
I thought that was pretty clear here.
I think, so top of, well, it's the begin, the end of Rule 4.
So delegate, any item?
And so, so I felt like, well, delegate, it seems a little bit confusing there because delegations, at delegations, we expect someone to raise an issue concerning what is on the agenda. That, that's how I understand that.
That's how we did it on the Board of Finance, but I saw that it was different here.
But then here.
At this, at this board, it's always been, if you want to come at the beginning to bring up something that's of concern to you, and then usually the public comment at the end is for them to get up, address something that came up during the meeting that they wanted to address. Because at that point, shortly after that, you have the selectmen's response where you can respond to it.
Right.
So that's why I think we've always gone with the delegations at the beginning. That's where you can, like Mr. Steele did tonight, it wasn't really relative to anything we had on our agenda, but he wanted to make that aware for, and that way the person doesn't have to sit here for the whole meeting.
So, I mean, when I was chairman of different boards, this is exactly the way that I would announce it. Is delegations is for any topic, whether it's on the agenda or not. And then the public comment is only for topics that are on the agenda.
Okay.
Board of Finance, we did it the exact opposite.
Yeah, correct.
Mr. Steele contacted me to ask me how to do it, and I went back and looked at this, and I was like, oh, it's the opposite, yeah.
It is the opposite.
Yeah.
I think, I think I, just let me take a second to look at my own notes here, because I read this a bit back in time. Yeah, just again, I still think that, that at the delegations, we could still specify what that, I guess that was my point. The delegations word needs a little specificity, so you could say it there, that word.
We could just, I could just, I could just add to their, you know, we don't need to really amend, but I can just add that it would be, delegations will be anything that, you know, any item of concern to a member of the, that wishes to speak. And then when they call public comments, please, you know, limit it to something that, what was discussed at the meeting tonight. That'd be easy enough to do.
Yeah.
Sure.
Rule 6, I was wondering about. We make, obviously in the notice, we would, you know, give the detail included here, the date, time, and place of the regular and special meetings. What about documents? How, I mean, are we, you know, it's kind of, I realize we don't do it regularly, but is it, is there anything that you, we want to advance here by this rule or not? Or sometimes I see them, sometimes I don't.
Documents for us, definitely, but, you know, document, normally, we're only required to, people could always contact the selectmen's office for further information or to get the documents provided. It just makes it a little, I think, easier.
It's, yeah, and it's, yeah, it's difficult to post everything.
Can they also find them at, when you post the minutes with the clerks? Is all the exhibits posted also?
Oh, yeah, every, when you post.
So the public can also go there?
Once the minutes are posted for any Board or Commission, the, everything that transpired there is included.
Right, that would be at the end of the process. I'm thinking more at the beginning of the process, because sometimes you'd hear that, you'd hear that from the public, that if they were interested in a topic and they didn't have what you were looking at, it was sort of frustrating for them to weigh in.
They get them here.
We do, she does put out a couple packets right there.
Everything can change, as you know, or stuff is added today.
Right, right.
So.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I just don't want to put two.
I'm not in favor.
Well, I'm not.
I'm not in favor of posting.
Yeah, I, I, I think the more, and then I think that puts too much on us. I, I mean, I don't want to overburden the people.
Okay.
You know.
Just a thought there. And then otherwise, there was to me, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Seven o'clock will be better.
Yes.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Thanks, Roseanne. I was thinking too, there's just some general cleanup, like each rule, we could have, you know, have some topic to it, so that when you're looking at the rules, you don't have to, if you're needing to find a particular topic within the rules, it's just a format I've seen in other bylaws where, you know, Rule 5 would be called X, the subject, yeah. So it's just easier to navigate through them, so.
That's a good idea.
Some of them have it, like Rule 12.
Yes, yeah, that one did, and when they added that.
Rule 9.
So, so just for clarification, the, the version that has Rule 12, was that the one actually filed with the town clerk's office?
No, that was not the one there, but somehow or another one that was approved in 2016. Rule 12 wasn't there, and when the attorney reviewed it, they said, you had a, they, their copy had a Rule 12. They had, said, no, they had a Rule 12. And they were right, because I remember when Jack Hogan, they amended it so he could participate by phone.
Okay.
Back then, so somehow or another, when it got filed at that point in time, that was not there. And had it been updated yearly, like it should have been, that would have been caught a lot, so.
Right, as long as we, we can amend any, you know, anything that we wish to amend, so to speak, but that we agree upon, as long as we know what document we're amending, you know, because, yeah, whether or not it has it or not. So that'd just be my suggestion, that we have, that we reference a particular doc, version.
Yes.
Yeah, so that that's clear. And we can add whatever we want to it, things that would sort of fell in the cracks or not.
And under housekeeping, this really doesn't have any dates on it, so it would be, well, I guess it does say adopted 12, 16, 13, 15, I'm sorry, my glasses aren't.
So any other comments on it? And obviously, we can work on this, we don't need to approve it tonight. We have some things to work out there. We can amend our, we just can't make a general amendment though, to make the meetings at seven o'clock, so.
Well, don't we a lot of times too have a town meeting at seven prior to the meetings? So it would be probably better to start it at seven, if that's usually when the town meeting is, and then continue right with the.
So we would change this to be seven o'clock, or immediate, immediately following any town meeting.
Yeah, 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 you know, town meeting at seven o'clock, Board of Selectmen meeting immediately following thereafter, so we can do that, yeah. So.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
So we want to amend 12 to allow for more electronic meetings? So if we've got a short agenda item, we can just have a Zoom meeting that's.
Yeah, we want to basically, you know, I would suggest letting, you know, running this through IT to see what they can come up with and follow some of the current, you know, have somebody find the current language that would be applicable, because.
But the way this is written right now, an electronic meeting still wants to have three people or two people physically here.
Well, we're still, actually, we may still be okay in that, because the governor's orders still apply. So we're probably, because the governor's orders waived a whole lot of this.
But beyond the government's order, given a world that doesn't have any COVID, do we still want to have an electronic world where if we have a short agenda, we want to just be able to get everybody together or approve something?
No, no, we don't, because we've done this a couple times when we want to do a call to, just, we want to convene, call a town meeting and adjourn. We've been able to do that with everybody zooming in, doing it, we're done. Rather than having to get three people in here.
And that's what I'm saying, so we don't want, so the way this is written now.
Yeah, eliminate that requirement of having live outing.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
We're in a different world.
But here, I, I think we could probably find.
We're in agreement, okay.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think we could find, I mean, because there's 11 things here. 11 numbers, you know, to the electronic conferencing. I think what we could probably see is what, what else has been done. This, I could reach out to the South, the council of governments and say, what do you, do you have a, something that other people have done that, that works? So I can easily request that from the Congress, easy enough.
And FOIA does address remote meetings.
Yes.
So that, whatever, whatever we put in there would need to be consistent with that.
Make sure it's consistent with.
Interesting thing with the FOIA presentation is what is not required is delegations. You do not have to allow public comment. And you can say, you can say, okay, listen, you know, you can limit them to the time, and you can also say at some point in time, okay, we're going to give three more people the right, because we have to conduct business tonight. You can, you know, which you hate to do, but, and I hate to do something like that, but I was kind of surprised. And they pointed out, they got into fact that El Aggrasso was the, the author of basically FOIA and got the state legislature to adopt it unanimously. Back in, yeah, I thought that was quite impressive.
So I just have another comment, not specifically on the rules, but when I'm listening to, say, Board of Finance meetings or the Board of Selectmen meetings, sometimes you don't know who's speaking. So I didn't know if, especially if people are going to be like zooming in or videotaping in to listen, if we could identify ourselves. Because sometimes, like, you know, I listen to it and I, like, I hear a person speaking, but I don't know who it is. Do you know what I mean?
No, I do, because it's, it's not like watching television. You're watching, it's much different quality of video, exactly.
So I don't think it has to be put in the rules, but if we could just remember to do that occasionally, just like identify yourself with the record, basically.
Yeah, because I know a lot of, during, during the Zoom meetings, that got a lot more frequent too, because you'd, people would do that, because you'd be looking around or something.
Trying to find the box, say what they're in.
Yeah, because we got to the point where during COVID, you're supposed to, in those remote, you're supposed to identify who you are, so-and-so vote. This is so-and-so moving that we approve.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's a good point, Anne, thank you.
Lots for watching the Brady Bunch, a lot really hope. Had that experience going into Zoom.
Okay, so we don't need to adopt anything on that tonight. So we'll move on to the Board of Selectmen meeting schedule for 2022. If you'll notice, we only have one schedule for January, a regular scheduled meeting, and I'll explain that to you, as you can see, and what Karen Galbo gave us, we're required to do this by the 31st of December, so we're okay. But no meeting of any board or commission shall be held sooner than 30 days after such schedule has been filed, and Anne Santoro picked this up. So if we schedule a meeting for January, a regular meeting for January 5th, we'd be in violation, and we, it would be an illegal meeting. So if we adopt what we have here, and we only, we always only have one in July 6th, I mean, in July and one in August, it would be fine. But then what we will do is we will still have a January 5th meeting, but it will be a special meeting. It'll be exactly the same agenda format that we'd have. The only thing we can't do, obviously, is add to, add to the agenda. Once it's posted, it's, you know, we can't do anything at the beginning of a meeting, add to it or anything like that, so. So.
We'll move to approve the Board of Selectmen 2022 regular meeting schedule as submitted.
Seconded. Okay, so moved and seconded, any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously. Moving on, American Rescue Plan, and, you know, I talked to a couple other first selectmen today at council of governments and so forth, and I'm going, they're going to give me some feedback too. But we've always talked about wanting to have a, an ad hoc committee to provide a strategic plan for the use of the remaining ARP funds. We have about 3.6 million or something left, once we get the additional 2.7 this year. So I think it's good that we have discussion to come up with what we think would be, you know, and we can think on this a little bit, to come up with, you know, the charge of the said committee, the timeframe which we want to provide recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, because it's the Board of Selectmen that make the recommend, or, you know, authorize the use of funds for a specific, it's, and Anne, you attended that at the Council, at Council, Connecticut Council of Municipalities Conference too. And I thought the intent would be to appoint members of the ad hoc committee, provide said charge. So I'd like, you know, everyone's input and provide a timeline at the 1-5-2022 Board of Select meeting. I was thinking of not, not having a large, my thoughts would be about a five-member committee. I was thinking one person from this committee, one person possibly from, one person from the Board of Finance. I thought someone from the, like a Karen Chair, a 501(c) organization in town. I was thinking of a merchant, someone like, someone from Main Street and that. And then the final person would just be a member of the community, so like a five-person committee. And, you know, report back, probably at the latest, by the end of, of February, with their recommendations for the use of the funds. I've got a lot of requests from them, so I'd make sure that got forwarded to it. Karen Chair, every time Karen Chair has made a request lately, though, they get a donation to buy what they need. They got the freezer, and then they identified they wanted some, they needed about $3,800 for new shelves. And Pat Payne called me today and said, well, we got that, somebody donated another $4,000, so now they've got those, so. Maybe we just keep advertising what they're asking for, and we won't have to give them any money.
So your expectation is on the meeting of the 5th, we will talk about this? And then perhaps place, create an ad hoc committee?
On the 5th, create the ad hoc committee and identify the members, because now we'll have the time to, you know, go out and solicit, you know, who we think should be good members. I mean, first of all, if we can agree on the composition of the board tonight, I think, of the ad hoc committee, that'd be good. One member, that, I think we should discuss a little bit tonight. One member from Selectmen, one from Finance, one, one, you know, and here again, I'm open to suggestions, but those are just my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I like those suggestions. The only other category, and I didn't know how to really fit it in, was departments, boards, and commissions. So, I mean, they're the ones, you know, that many times generate, you know, these projects that, capital projects, infrastructure projects that could qualify. So how best to, you know, take note of them, get that information, and incorporate that?
Maybe add one more person to a group and make it, someone like a department head from the town. Because if you, if you start bringing, from every board and commission, we'd have 15 or 16 people.
Right, exactly.
And 2026 would already be here and gone before we'd be able to come to a consensus.
Right.
So maybe just add an additional person who would be, you know, because I, I've asked the town, and I'm going to have another department meeting where I say, look, identify stuff. Water and Sewer's done a really good job.
Yes.
Parks and Rec is, you know, coming up with some suggestions. So maybe if we had a, you know, ask the department heads to have somebody represent them, so maybe extend it to six and go from there. Because then I think we'd have a good fraction of what, what town needs are. And, you know, I think that covers a pretty good cross-section of the commitment.
So it'd be a representative from the department heads, I mean, because we don't want to overtax.
No, yeah.
An actual department head.
No.
Having attended committee, maybe they could send an emissary to, yeah, to represent.
Yeah.
So like when we did the purchasing policy, I mean, they were very interested in participating because they wanted their fingerprints on the document.
Oh, yeah.
They had different, definite concerns.
Well, Anna, Anna, and Joe Burgaw and Dave Putnam said they want to make sure that their concerns are represented. So I've got, you know, so I'm sure, you know, we could probably, I'm sure one of, one of them. We're not talking about a long committee here, we're talking about, you know, a fairly quick turnaround to identify the use.
But you've already benchmarked other towns as far as what they've done to set their.
Yeah, I'm meeting with Rob Brule, because they've already allocated everything out, what they're doing. So I'm going to sit down with him and talk about what they've done, because they've had finite figures for, they put a lot into water and sewer. And they've put a lot into, you know, the mental, mental health issues and so forth like that. So I'm going to see what he's done, but they've also looked at the arts as well and, you know.
But that's clearly, I think, near needs-based, and if some town is, is got a well that's really having a problem, they probably want to spend a lot of money on fixing the well, for another town that doesn't, so.
No, no, I'm not.
That's why I think the department heads are a vital part of this, this team. So you want Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Department Head, 501(c). So you want Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Department Head, 501(c), Representative? Who else?
A member of the community. I thought, I thought.
Main Street, it's a merchant.
Yeah, someone from one of the merchants organizations. I think that gives us a good idea.
Maybe a community member at large that.
Yes, like I said, six people.
Yeah, as Ann said here, no particular.
Yeah.
Agenda or, you know, requirement.
Now, when you spoke to Mr. Ruhl, did they form an ad hoc committee? Is that what you?
No, he pretty much, the Board of Selectmen did it and then had it endorsed by their, because they have a whole different form of government. They had their representative town meeting. And they endorsed that, so that's what was approved, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, from keeping up a bit with this ARP, you know, legislation since it was enacted and reading some articles, it just seems like there's all different approaches to coming up with the desired list. And then with the recent CCM meeting that Kevin was mentioning, at that, I went to a presentation there. And in that presentation, the Selectmen from East Windsor had this beautiful document of what he had done in a matter of months. He found that he and his, and his Board of Selectmen felt as though the businesses were hurting the most. For them, that was the most acute thing, you know, compared to, let's say, our, the way our board had decided differently in the previous board. And so they hired a consultant, and the consultant helped them with a grant program. And 113 businesses got, in the neighborhood of about $10,000 each. But it ran the gamut of every business in that town. It's a, you know, big business community there, I guess. But that was just one example, but it just seems like it really is, the methodology seems to be tailored to what, what the towns read, what they find.
Which is a logical way to do it.
Makes sense, you know? And the act itself doesn't give you that, doesn't give you that little blueprint.
No, that's.
You've got to do the committee. You've got to do this and do that.
Well, one of the things I thought, by having a 501(c), like Karen Chair, is they know the families in need in this town. So if they can come in and say, okay, we want X amount of dollars to help these, that means, because I don't think we have the resources to sit down and start going out to families and, you know, that would just be, you know, we don't have the resource. We'd spend all the money doing all that rather than helping people out. So, you know, but, you know, I think it's obviously has some needs, so.
Definitely, yeah, individual needs. And that's in the act as well, that we, you know.
And, yeah, and especially, and as Ann Santoro found out at that meeting, that, you know, they tell, these are the guidelines for how you could use the money, and those guidelines are not fixed in stone. They keep, you know, moving around a little bit, you know, because, you know, open space is considered part of it. And, you know, Parks and Rec, well, you know, leisure, we understand all that too. So we're looking at, you know, so.
Yeah, but the act, you know, is intended to help the recovery from COVID. But in the process of doing that, it's, you know, it's got some other agenda, other agendas in there, you know, which is fine. But, you know, so that's kind of mixed in when you read the law and the regulations, you know, so.
But that's to make the community less susceptible to another COVID-type event.
Yeah, I mean, it all, it all does connect.
And that's why, you know, one of the things I, okay, we've already looked at digitizing Karen's records in Town Hall, which we're going to do, which will go back to the point where they were, up to the point where the.
Scribes.
Were scribes, yeah. Written, so we're doing good. Yeah, you know, yeah. But our land records and building, I think, need, and that would probably be at least $300,000 or $400,000, you know. I said, Karen, can you get that same company to come in and give us an idea of what that would cost on there? I think we need to definitely do that, because if we ever have to shut down here again, you don't want people to be able to work from, you know, to get to what they need from other sources and that.
So then, do we want to give this team some kind of guidance or some kind of ground rules to say that we want 20% capital programs, this percent, some kind of?
Yeah, I think, I think that, I think you have to give them a charge. If you say, come back, tell us what you want. I mean, we're going to get.
Especially if it's only a month. If you're only going to give them a month, they're going to have maybe a meet in a month, oh, you know, meet in a week for four weeks.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we, you know, we say, okay, we've got X amount of dollars and we, I think this is what we can give, because I don't think we can come to a decision tonight on that, because you need to think about it, because tomorrow you go, oh, I wish I had thought of that. But the arts is part of this, you know, and, you know, I'd love to come up with something, because I've had a written proposal given to me by a couple, some 501(c)s, that they'd like some money. And what they were talking about how, you know, it's usually 100,000. I said, oh my, what's this, and it wasn't. It was a $10,000 request. And I thought, oh, that wasn't, that was reasonable. But here again, that's all got to be vetted out and, you know. But along that line, like I said, provide a charge. So I think this gives us a few weeks to think about it and identify some people to.
And the previous Board of Selectmen's choices covered quite a few categories, you know, within, within the law. So the question, to your, to your point, Bill, yeah, I think some charge that, you know, looks at that and what we've addressed, and now going forward, what else, you know, needs to be done. Yeah, I think that's.
And, yeah.
Because I think we all have our own opinion on, on what areas are the most important.
Yeah, and water and sewer, I know, is coming back for another request. And, you know, it's more than likely it's going to be for the Nantucket Pump House. We think that's the one that sends our sewage up the hill by past Dominion and on its way. And if it, you know, that, that would be catastrophic if there was ever failure. And it is in need of work, but, you know, it's not $3 or $4 million. It's about 350. So, but, and.
As Bill pointed, I think it's incumbent on this board to set the parameters, what areas.
Oh, yeah.
Some, what their charge is going to be. I think.
Some kind of ground rules, yeah.
Yeah, all right. So think on that and think of, you know, for the composition and we'll be, and so be able to move on that in a few weeks. So like I said, I just want to discuss that. Thank you for input.
So did you want concurrence today for those six different groups of people? So you start recruiting?
I mean, yeah, just a concurrence to move to, for one member of the.
Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Town Department Head, 501(c), Community Member at Large, and something like, yeah, and then Main Street.
Yeah, from the commercial sector, yeah.
Commercial sector, yeah, I called it Main Street.
Which will probably, you know, the one we have is Main Street, so I'm sure that would be them.
So at least you can spend the next couple of weeks recruiting those six members, and then we can have the formal.
Okay.
How do we pick the community member? How do we solicit?
Well, you know, that's going to, that's going to be the tough one. Be, you know, and here again, you know, I, you'd like it to be someone who, who's, you know, someone who's knowledgeable of town and, you know, I hate to, in Salem, we used to have what was called the, I forget what they used to call them, the unsung heroes is what they called, the people that were never a member of Board or Commission. They were just always out there, working in the community, doing things. And, you know, I'm sure, you know, we can think of somebody that's done that, you know, and it doesn't matter what it is, they're there to help, you know. And, you know.
I would, I would lean towards avoiding picking somebody based on just what we think right now, and we'd ask for volunteers. And then after we got that pool of volunteers, maybe kind of select somebody from that or.
And see, that's just it, rather than us reach out, you know.
So how do we, how do we get the word out?
We can, we can, we can just say that we formed, we're in the process of forming an ad hoc committee. We'd like, and there'd be one member of the community at large, and we'd be interested in anyone that's interested, please, you know.
But what communication? I think, I think the question is how are we going to communicate?
Well, we could, we could, if Everbridge were working.
Town website, is there?
There's a town website, we can do it. And what I can do is I can ask Elizabeth Regan to do an article on this, what we're going to be moving forward to, and post it in the New London Day. I can reach also out to the Connecticut Examiner. I think those are the two best things to do.
Yeah, because I don't think it's appropriate to put it on a Facebook or something like that.
No, no.
But if there's somebody that reads the article, then they can put it on a Facebook.
Yeah, and then, then, once it's in, once it's in there, post it on the community forum and that, and then, you know, we could get 100.
Those that are interested, send your name and, you know, we don't need a resume, I don't think.
No, we'll just have them contact, I hate to sand egg, you know, where this is going, don't you?
But we can get a list.
Contact the First Selectmen's office and get a list.
Yeah, and then we can review it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
And then if all people are created equal, we draw a name out of a hat. I mean, it's, you know, if, if, I would, if there's a bunch of people who apply and if they all are qualified, then it can just be a random selection.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
For sure.
Okay, so we need the motion to approve the composite, I mean, not, not the member, not the specific names, but members of the committee.
The methodology.
Yeah, motion to approve the ad hoc committee to be composed of one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Board of Finance.
Second, yeah, a, one member of a local 501(c)(3), a department head representative of East Lime Department Heads, the, a member of the business community, and a community individual at large.
You got them all.
You got them all.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, I think Ann beat, Ann Chetel beat you on that one.
Okay.
I hate to, I hate to end the conversation, the next, when we talk about somebody from the business community, if we want to narrow that down and make it a small business as opposed to somebody from.
Yes, true. Yeah, we could do that.
Not that we have a whole lot of large businesses.
Right, no, I mean, in fact, that's the nature of our businesses, so that's fine.
Yeah, small, yeah, because, yeah, we don't need Costco's general manager or something like that. Don't think they'd be interested anyway, because they're not going to be, I think. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously? Next is we have to set a special town meeting. We approved the NOVA time at the Board of Select meeting on the December 1st. Board of Finance approved it on the 8th, so now that has to move to a town meeting. So, Ann, if you read the charge.
Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the town of East Lime to be held on January 5th, 2022 at 7:00 PM at the East Lime Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to consider and act upon a special appropriation in the amount of $67,392 for the following items, with the source of funds being American Rescue Funds. $67,392, NOVA time, parentheses Andrews Technology, time and attendance system. Number two, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting, dated at East Lime, Connecticut, this 15th day of December 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? This will really help out. I spent today, I spent about five minutes signing triplicates of department head leave requests, because you're coming up on, they're all wanting a day off with the holidays coming up and, so, anyway. Okay, that includes it. Any extra official reports, Dan?
None from me tonight.
I, yeah, I guess I, I guess unofficially have one. Yeah, last evening, I went to the sewer, Water and Sewer Commission meeting.
I usually cover that since I.
Oh, Kevin, okay, so Kevin, I said, right, that's fine. Go ahead, please do.
Yeah, no, no, but that's, you're basically the takeover for me in there whenever.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't ask you ahead, sorry.
No, that's all right, that's, that's right, yeah. But it was a good meeting.
It was a good.
And Ann Chetel and Bill, you have yet to have a meeting, so, unless you have, I don't know.
No.
No.
I just got assigned tonight.
Yeah, we're good. Yeah, so I'll just move on with the first election report. Public Safety Building is Rich made, you know, is the building now. We're having, when, there's been two meetings this week, an actual meeting on Monday out there, just to actually go out there and look at it. It's close. The roofing material is, we were told by the contractor, is the membrane, the insulation and the roofing material are here. But they're here, obviously, it means they're not at the Public Safety Building, but he said they're here. So we're hoping they get on. We've got some good weather coming up over the next few days. But weekly on Wednesday, they meet and go through a punch list. It's getting narrower and narrower, to the point now where it's, okay, it's, the door doesn't, when it shuts, it doesn't actually latch or something like that. So something that can be easily taken care of. So we're getting very close. Fire marshals has already moved in. Dispatch will probably move in regardless of the roof status in the first couple of weeks of January, and the police will be phased in there. There's a few things that have to be done in the lockup, and these are on the contractor and the architect before we can start housing prisoners. So we're hoping that can be done by the end of January, so we don't have to extend our contract or lease with Waterford. I've talked to Rob Ruhl about it. He said, you need another month or two. We'll do it, you know, on an as-needed basis. One other thing too, fire truck, Chief Barone called me the other day. We had a fire truck that needed, was losing oil pressure. They feel that needed some minor work. They picked it up after it was worked on. Problem was still there, so they drove it right back. It's a header. This is a 10-year-old truck that's out of warranty. He's gotten an estimate of $23,000 to repair this. He needed permission to cut a PO for that. He does have enough money in his budget for us to cut a PO for that, but he's obviously going to need some money back from this too. It's being done at Cummins up in Rocky Hill. They're not the sole provider of being the person that could do the repairs on this, but they're the sole provider of the parts. So if, and the only, there's a couple of other places, but we'd have to have the truck towed there, which would be an over $1,000 tow for a vehicle of that size to do that. So according to the purchasing policy, we're down a fire engine. We want to get it back in services quick. So I think it merits the emergency exemption under the purchasing policy. So that's going to be fixed. He's kept me up to date on that. And he's going to try and, you know, limit how much he'll need transfer, you know, to come back for an appropriation back into his budget. But he's going to basically use everything he's got for, he's got $22,000 in his maintenance budget right now. This is 23, so they're going to transfer some money out of another write-in within his budget, so they're able to cut the PO. So I just want to make everyone aware of this. We're doing it because we need the fire truck back in service.
10-year-old truck?
A 10-year-old truck that is outside of warranty. It's got 31,000 miles on it. But he's been, he told me this a couple of days ago, and he said, you know, and he needed to, and here again, parts are at a premium. They have them there. A couple of other places he called, even if it was towed there, they don't have the parts. And they couldn't give an estimate when they'd get them. But these are coming parts, so they obviously have the parts, so. The gas station that Rich Steel brought up, that has not been approved by the Department of Transportation yet. There's been a lot of approval by us, and because it is a state road, that whether it's dangerous or not will be determined by the state. I have my own personal feelings on it. It's hard enough getting on that with a car sometimes, if you're getting on, and especially if you get off 95 and have to make that left to go across traffic. So I don't know with that. I've talked to Paul from Make and Holly. They have the same, they've shared the same things, they're making their feelings on. But state DOT is the one that will ultimately say whether or not it's, it'll meet their requirements.
Well, state DOT, do they look at the traffic?
Oh, yes.
And the fatalities? Do you know how many fatalities?
Oh, yeah.
And bin rate where 395, 91, and 95?
Oh, yeah. They do look at that, yeah. I mean, when, when cars get on 95 northbound to try and get over 395 is, now, that, here again, once the other 74 is redone, it'll help a little bit, but if you're getting on 75, it won't. You know, so I'm, we have some real concerns about that, you know, and, you know, in zoning here, there are things where they met the criteria, they did all the testing, you know, you can't deny them, but DOT has not said yes to this yet, so.
What's, oh, excuse me, what's the timeframe for the DOT? Is there, do they have a timeframe?
I'm trying to find out right now.
Oh, okay.
Because, yeah, that article in the paper, I didn't know about it until I saw it in the paper. It was like, okay.
It was a shocker.
Yeah, I hadn't, I, I knew they, I hadn't known that that hadn't even closed on yet. So that's a little surprised too. We'll talk about this coming up, but we, I talked about during my comments about charter revision. What we're going to do is Sandy will email you copies of the last charter revision, which was convened in April of 2008 and reported out in 2009. So you'll see what they considered in that. And plus I have gotten some documentation on a lot of the legislation that covers the charter revision. So I'll have plenty of time to look that over and read, you know, educate yourself on, on all the ins and outs of a charter revision before we bring that forward. But the last one convened, as I said, in April of 2008 and reported out about a year later because there's a lot of requirements for hearings and, you know, periods before you can bring it back. So I would think after the budget season, because we're going to get hit with that in, in February and then we'll turn it over in March. So after that might be a good time to focus on charter revision. Dominion Building, we've talked about whether or not the town should purchase that. I'm going to be meeting with Dominion over the next couple of weeks and then I'll come back and then we'll have an executive session to discuss that because that'll be possible real estate and so forth, so we'll talk about that. Union contracts, all, we have four. All four are up for negotiation this year. I'm going to see if I can talk to the couple of them, maybe if they'll extend a year. Of course, there'll have to be some type of wage adjustment, but extend, so we don't have all four coming up every, at the same time. And I mentioned about the budget, first meeting in February is where we'll get our books, you'll get your books, I'll be, Anna's, by tomorrow has requested all of them to have their budgets turned in. I'll get them to look at next week and then I'll start meeting with the department heads after the holiday break to go through that. The COVID situation, Steve Mansfield at the COG meeting today, 99% of the positive tests are all still the Delta variant. But after, in January, they expect to be the spike being the Omicron one, but that it is generally less severe and much, you know, milder and, you know, you know, not nearly as dangerous and it's become more a lot prevalent. And he pointed out the high rates of, that we have right now for COVID as far as, you know, we're like 8%, or something like that over the last couple of days. He said it was about the same in January, but we're still at a much less severe, it's much less severe and much less fatal than it was. And he testified the vaccine and the, you know, boosters and so forth like that. Hospitalizations are up a little bit, but he said those are predominantly over 75% are the unvaccinated. Of concern was Julie got some stuff today from Connecticut DPH. In the month from 11/14 to 12/14 in East Lime, we had 544 COVID tests, 197 positives, so 36.2% are positive. So that was of concern. Ledge Light and Unca's Health have recognized it's almost impossible to get a test right now. So they're trying to find places. I've reached out to see if we could possibly, because school adjournments next week over the holiday break, possibly have a drive-through at the middle school or the high school. And before I, I ask the school, I'm going to find out if we, if we can, if that's even a possibility, but it's getting hard to do that, so we'll see if we can do that. As I mentioned, January 11th at 6:30 right here, an FOI for boards and commissions. If it looks like we'll have a lot of people, we'll move it to a bigger place. But it was a really great presentation yesterday and I think it very, it helped out a lot. As you got the information, we're all getting our own emails. Tom Hennig from, even recommended that yesterday, the fellow from FOI said, no, he thinks all boards and commission members should have a town email because then if there's a question, boom, you don't have to worry about, geez, I get something on my personal email, it's all set. And the last thing, which would be Dave Putnam, our Parks and Rec director is retiring on September of next year. He called me last week and said, I need to talk to you. And I thought, oh, it didn't look good when he told me, no, it wasn't good. I mean, I'm glad, no, it wasn't because something bad happened or something like that, but by September 22nd. And that is the one department head position in town that is hired by the Parks and Rec Department. The town does not do it. The town would negotiate terms of the contract, but they do the hiring. Water and Sewer, the well, work on well five is going to begin shortly. April timeframe for being done, they, a little bit of a delay in getting some parts, but they figure it won't have any impact on water or anything like that and it'll be back to full capacity, which is over 700 gallons a minute. There's some other things that need to be done. We need to finalize our agreement with O-Lime, but O-Lime really needs to, you know, that, they're going to be working with our town attorney because we have to come up with an agreement for that. And then we have to have the two-town agreement with Waterford that just basically says, yes, we can let our flow go through there, which of course they, we can't, anything. But I think that was the, the big thing from that. Some good stuff, the light parade this weekend was really well. I did get some complaints about vendors for a couple of reasons. One was they were in people's ways on the road as they were going up and down the road. They were blocking the view. Some were complaining about the fact that there were some flags that were, you know, you know, politically motivated. We can, through, we can restrict where they can be. The flags, we obviously can't do, you know, because, you know, that's a First Amendment right. But, you know, I can understand people's concerns when they're trying to watch a parade and these carts are going by and then they stop to sell to somebody. So I'm going to work with the police chief and the town attorney, see if we need to tighten up our, our ordinance on that, on that. So Stem the Stars tonight at Public House. Diane Swan, who's trying to get the, at the high school, get the astronomy room, the.
Planetarium.
The what?
Planetarium.
Planetarium, I couldn't think of the word. The planetarium back up and going, she's got enough funding for the projector so they can start projecting things. That's going to be delivered soon, but they had a fundraiser there tonight at Stem the Stars. I stopped in for just a couple of minutes. It was a nice turnout and they had a lot of stuff to raffle off. Flanders Fire Department, this past weekend, they had a toy drive. They filled up a hole, they overfilled something with, and it's all for toys for tots. And then Niantic Baptist Church acts as their, you know, basically is their church or provides, you know, pastoring for them if they need it and stuff like that. And through their own money and donations, nothing town-related, they raised and made a $5,000 donation to the Niantic, the Baptist Church up in the north end of town, which I thought was really nice. And just one last thing, holiday garbage. So everyone remembers Friday, the 24th is a holiday, so there'll be no garbage pickup.